Michael, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Um, I'm not sure what happened here. Okay. I found it. Julie, you're muted.
Okay. So this is a call to order of the regular meeting of the Mount Healthy Board of Education for October of 2020. This is a public meeting of the Board of Education in compliance with the Ohio Department of Health Stay-at-Home Order. Could I have a roll call, please?
Yes. Ms. Bryant?
I'm here.
Mrs. Ellis?
Present.
Mr. Glenn?
Here.
Mr. Kilgore?
Here.
And Dr. Turner?
I'm here. All right. Board members have had the opportunity to move my microphone a little bit here, to look at the agenda for this. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda as written?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Kilgore, seconded by Mrs. Ellis. Any discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Yes. Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner? Dr. Turner?
Yes. Did you get everyone in there because it kind of cut in and out?
Yes, you're cutting in and out too, to me, anyway.
Okay.
To me also.
Okay. Board members have also had the opportunity to look at the minutes of last month's meetings. We had one on September 2nd. That says written.
I'll move.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Ellis, seconded by Mr. Glenn. Any discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Yes. Ms. Bryant? Ms. Bryant? You're on mute.
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm five on the agenda, special orders. Five A is Mount Healthy Teachers Association. I don't believe we have anything from them.
Julie Wakefield sent me a text and they said that they didn't have anything to report.
Thank you. Five B, communications announcements, public input. Dr. Hawkins, do we have anything there?
We did have one email. Reverend Bryce sent an email and he said that he would like for us to consider naming the Early Learning Center after Dr. Cosby. And I said that I would pass on his comment to the board. And that's all.
Okay. I actually completely missed all of that. You froze up on mine.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Reverend Bryce sent an email and said that now that the Early Learning Center has started construction, he would like to propose that the Early Learning Center be named after Dr. Cosby for all of her hard work that went into making that a reality. And he would like the board to take that under consideration. And that's the only.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Item five C, recognitions. I'm assuming we don't have any this evening?
No.
Yeah, Dr. Turner keeps cutting in and out.
Okay. Item six. Everybody's freezing up on me too. And I don't know what to do about that. I could try exiting the meeting and rejoining. I don't know if that would help or not.
I think that might be a good idea.
Okay.
To start. I think that might be a good idea to start.
Dr. Turner could also just turn off the video and that would help with the streaming as well.
Okay. Let's see if this is better. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Item six is the vocational board report. Mrs. Ellis?
Okay. Well, you know, we're holding our meetings via Zoom and those that choose to go to the facility. So the meeting that we had last Wednesday, the two doc, um, doctor, the treasurer and the CE CFO, I mean CEO, they both gave their, what do you call them, strategy for the 2021 school year. And so what's his name, Ben, he gave his, and his goal is to prepare and support all learners to successfully enter, compete, and advance in their educational and career path and create an environmental and provide resources that meet the evolving needs of learners, industry, and our community. And he's got under values honesty, trust, respect, quality, equity. And his strategies is to provide leadership through financial stewardship. Number two is improve operational efficiency and utilization of resources. And three is provide effective communication to the stakeholders of the Great Oaks Career Campaign. And the strategies for the CEO is number one, encourage collaboration, adaption, adaptation, and flexibility for COVID-19 this school year. And number two is foster culture that promotes connectedness among individuals and the organization. And three is to contribute facilities, updates to support innovation and future workshop demand. And that's it.
All right, thank you. Item seven is the legislative report. Few items for tonight. First, House Bill 197 on educator licensure. This is the coronavirus relief bill. It's part of that. It provides flexibility to educators regarding the renewal of credentials previously set to expire on July 1st, 2020. Under this law, the period for educators to complete their renewal requirements and renew their licenses has been extended to December 1st, 2020. Also, ODE is granting a one-time, one-year temporary license for the 2021 school year to applicants who meet all other qualifications for licensure but have been unable to complete their required initial licensure examinations. Applications for a one-year temporary license will be accepted by the Office of Educator Licensor until December 1st, 2020. And then there was a court decision. The U.S. Department of Education and its head, Betsy DeVos, back in July, put in place what was known as the interim final rule regarding CARES Act funds. The rule sought to direct significantly more federal coronavirus aid to private school students than is typically required. Betsy DeVos argued that CARES Act funds were intended for students in both public and private schools during the pandemic crisis. Public schools disagreed. U.S. District Judge Dabney Friedrich has announced that this rule will no longer be in effect. Districts will still have to set aside some CARES funds to provide equitable services for selected at-risk and disadvantaged students, students attending non-public schools, but will not have to turn over funds for all students in non-public schools. And that is the legislative report. Item eight, report of the treasurer, Ms. Brooks.
Thank you. I'd like you to accept, item A, excuse me. I'd like you to accept the schedule of bills for September 2020.
I'll move.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Ellis, seconded by Mr. Glenn. Any discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Yes. Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item B is, please accept the financial statements for September 2020.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Who moved?
I heard Carol. All right, let's say moved by Mrs. Ellis and seconded by Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
That's great.
Any discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Yes. Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you, and that's all I've got for you tonight.
Okay. Item nine is the superintendent's report. Dr. Hawkins?
Right. So item A, a change order. Starting to approve the change order for Mark Spalding Construction Company for clearing and mulching of the alternate area at the Early Learning Center site. This shows the original contract and the revised amount, which would change it by $3,297.65.
Okay. Do I have a motion to accept that change order?
Go move.
Hold on. I'll second it.
Okay, moved by Mr. Glenn, seconded by Mrs. Ellis. Any discussion?
Yes, why such an increase? Was there a problem in the area or were the materials more expensive or?
Yes, so originally we had said no to where they were going to clear an area as an alternate open field. That was one of the extras. They originally wanted $25,000, I believe that was Becky, to do that. And we said no to that. Later, when they started talking about moving the dirt, they came back and said that because they have to have a spoils area for the dirt, they have to do that, an area of that anyway. And it fall, it fell within the contingency amount. And so in talking with them, if they were going to grade it and make it a usable area anyway, we talked to them about making it in a way that the students could at least use it. And so this was kind of the compromise that we came up with, that they would have their spoils area, but after it was finished, they're going to level that and put down some seed and some mulching so that the students could use that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Certainly. Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Item B is the recommendation to approve the purchase of 224 touchscreen notebooks. These are for our teachers. When the teachers started the year, they had old Chromebooks and they were not able to record and hold their classes on the computers that we had. So we are recommending buying these computers. This would replace all of the computers for the teachers in the district to allow them to do what they need to for the classroom. And then the old Chromebooks will then be given to students to use for connecting to delay having to buy more of them.
All right. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Okay. Moved by Ms. Bryant and we'll say seconded by Mr. Glenn. Any discussion?
What is the cost?
The cost is $321,440,000. So it is a significant cost. The teachers, however, will be able to use these for at least three to four years. And without them, there has not been a significant purchase for the teachers' computers in several years. So we want to then develop a technology plan where the computers are being replaced on an annual basis instead of such a large initial cost.
And just to clarify, that was $321,440.
Yes, sorry, yes, 321,440.
Is that coming out of the general fund or is that something to do with the CARES Act or?
It's a combination. We're using all of the CARES Act money that we can. So we tried to use all of the money that was for this type of situation, and then we did have to use some out of other funds.
And this was put out on bid, correct?
Technology items are not bid. We did contact several vendors. We put it out to several of our vendors that we use to see who would give us the best price.
Great. Any further discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Yes. Excuse me. Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Item C is related to graduation, and I wanted to give some general information to the board. I've mentioned at different meetings that I've been digging into data regarding our senior class, just as a overview information so that you can be aware. Right now on our books, we have 307 students that are listed in the cohort of 2021. We do not have that many at the high school, but that means that 307 students at some time since their ninth grade year have attended Mount Healthy. And when they left us to go to another school or to drop out, they did not do it in a way that allowed them to come off of our cohort number, so they are still showing as a Mount Healthy student. Of the 307, 87 of those students have withdrawn, and we're looking to find out where they are. At the high school right now, we have 220 seniors that have schedules and that they are working. Unfortunately, of that 220, only 29 of the seniors have met their testing requirement to graduate this year.
Oh, my God.
Mm-hmm. In addition to that, only 54 of the seniors have earned the credits that they need to graduate this year. So right now with the cohort of 307, we have about 10% of seniors on track to graduate. In response to this, I am proposing several changes. The first of which, I would like Mount Healthy to change the number of credits to graduate to state minimums. Right now, we have 22 credits and community service that is a requirement. I would like us to go to the state minimums, which basically removes two elective classes so that we would have 20 credits to graduate. Under the new graduation requirements, there are seals attached to graduation. One of the seals is a community service seal, which we'll talk about in a minute. So I would like to move the community service requirement to that community service seal. This will give an opportunity for more of our seniors to graduate, and we are going to be developing a very intensive senior intervention program at the high school and bringing in someone, which I'll mention in a little while. But I would like to change the graduation requirements from 22 to 20.
Dr. Hawkins, is that going to be a temporary thing or you just want to do that for just a school year?
I would recommend doing it permanently. Students always have the option to earn more credits if they're interested in that. Right now, of, as I mentioned, of our 307 that we're responsible for, we only have 54 seniors that are within five credits of graduating. Julie, Dr. Turner, you're on mute.
Becky, did we do the motion on that?
No.
Okay, so I need a motion.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Bryant, seconded by Mrs. Ellis. Any additional discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant? Ms. Bryant, you're muted.
I was looking at, for example, the fine and performing arts seals. And my kids were in band, so that's the only one that I'm like really familiar with. And from my time at Mount Healthy, like if you were in band or if you were in choir, you can only have one credit hour for your four years. So you only got, receive the quarter. But it looks like they're going to receive a point, which I believe is a credit, correct?
And that's something different. That's under the new graduation seals, which we, I'll go over as soon as we finish C. That's part of the new graduation.
Oh, okay. Okay, okay. All right, I'm sorry, jumping ahead.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item D refers to the seals. Under the new, the class of 2021 and class of 2022 has two options. They can do the old graduation requirements, which was earning 18 end-of-course points, or getting an industry credential with passing the work keys, which is like the ACT for career and technical, or taking a college class. That was the testing requirement. With their credits, they would get a diploma. Under the new requirements that will be mandatory in 2023, students must show proficiency in Algebra I and English 10. In addition to that, they can choose to complete seals. So the seals, there are state seals and then there are local seals. Students must complete one state seal, then they can choose to complete a local seal or they could do two state seals. As a Board of Education, you have the authority to authorize the three seals. They had not been approved yet, so I wanted to go ahead and get that on our agenda. The first is the community service seal, and there we are moving over the 30 hours that previously had been a graduation requirement. The second is the fine or performing arts seal, and as Ms. Bryant mentioned, all of our students who are in choir and band or plays, they can earn points for a variety of things. And if they earn the four points, then they will earn that seal. The third is student engagement, which really recognizes our athletes and students that are in band but outside of the school day. So marching band, pep band, things like that. They can earn points as well, and then they could get the student engagement seal. So all of these seals will appear on the diploma for the students, and we will track all of that information. But these three seals are locally defined seals. The other seals, which are in the packet that was with the board report, are state-defined. So for instance, like the science seal, students would have to earn a three or higher on the biology exam to get that seal. So those are determined by the state. These three are determined locally.
Dr. Hawkins?
Yes.
On those, do they automatically get them or is it a situation where they tell you that they're going to try to get that particular seal?
They automatically get that by enrolling or being in an organization. And Mrs. Ellis, we also added the career and technical organizations so that the students at Great Oaks would be receiving points for that as well.
Okay.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept those seals as they are presented to us?
So move.
Moved by Mrs. Ellis, seconded by Mr. Glenn. Any additional discussion?
Yes, you said that community service was initially a requirement, is no longer a requirement for graduation?
That was a requirement that was part of the Mount Healthy Board of Education. They had to earn their credits, get their testing requirement, and 30 hours of community service. So we have moved that to the community service seal, so students would have the choice of doing that. If they didn't want to do community service, they could do a different seal. But that is an option for the community service. Many of our students enjoy doing the community service, and so we wanted to make sure that was part of that.
So they don't have to actually earn all three seals?
No, they can earn, they can earn all three if they want. They have to earn two seals. One must be state, and then one can be local if they choose. Most of our students, I think, will choose to earn a local seal. They could earn two state seals if they wanted to. And our hope is that our students will earn many seals because all of these will be on their diploma. But they could, they can only, they have to have one state and one local if that's what they choose for the minimum. But they could choose to do just two state.
Can they do? Is there a possibility of earning multiple seals in one particular area?
Not in one particular area. So once you earn the seal, it goes on your diploma. But for instance, some of the state seals are the history seal. So if students get a three on the American history exam and the American government exam, they would earn the history seal. There's a military seal. So any of our students that are choosing to enlist in the armed services, they would get that seal on their diploma. And some of the others might be an honors diploma seal. If the students have earned an honors diploma, they would get that seal. We have technology seal. If the students take a college-level technology class, they would get the technology seal. And the packet that's with the board items just gives you a little bit of detail on all of the seals that are available. So for the new graduation requirements, students must earn two, even though, you know, there's about 10 altogether. They have to earn two of them. One must be a state seal.
Okay, any other discussion or questions? I know that Dr. Hawkins was explaining this to me a few days ago, and I said, I would imagine that right now during the pandemic, it must be really hard for students to find good community service opportunities. So at least for now, I think removing that as an absolute graduation requirement is probably a sensible thing to do. Okay, no other discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item E is the recommendation that Mount Healthy City School District participate in the Student Teacher Observer Program at Franklin participate in the Student Teacher Observer Program at Franklin University for the two thousand and twenty-one school year. We are trying to develop more partnerships with local colleges to increase our pool of potential teachers. So this was one college that we reached out to, and they have agreed to allow their students to come and work in our schools with the hope that they will see what a wonderful place it is, and when they're ready to select a school to become a teacher at, they will want to come to Mount Healthy.
Where's for?
Columbus.
Columbus.
Oh, oh, that one. Okay, okay. I know what you, I know where it's at.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Let, let's say moved by Mr. Glenn, seconded by Ms. Bryant.
No, Ms. Ellis.
Ms. Ellis, sorry. Couldn't quite hear. Uh, any further discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Becky, you're on mute.
Okay. Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Okay.
Item F is the recommendation to adopt a resolution authorizing in lieu of transportation payments for the two thousand and twenty-one school year. There's an attachment. This is a, a standard item that we have each year.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Mrs. Ellis, seconded by Ms. Bryant. Any discussion?
Yes. I want to comment that I, I appreciate whoever did that, uh, report because it was more understandable than the prior ones we've gotten. It was. It was nice. Right.
Okay. Any other discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item G is the consent agenda, and the different things are listed below. I will make note of one, that we are using the grant, a grant to bring in someone to, they're titled manager of innovation. They are going to be running the senior intensive innovation program, trying to target the hundred and sixty-eight in-person seniors that are not on track to graduate.
Uh, and so some of those students that, um, that didn't participate near the end of the year as they're in their junior year?
A few of them. Some of them, sometimes, you know, I was speaking, for instance, with Mr. Party today. Ten percent of our student population almost is homeless. So a lot of times, students come to us, that's a large percentage for a school district. And students come with, with very little credits because they've moved a lot. We have a lot of foster care students that also, the transancy. But then we also have some that because of COVID, they just did not finish their credits. So this is going to be a very intensive program where we're even going to be offering it in the evening. We are going to be letting students come in on a flexible schedule. We are going to try to do everything that we can to help students come in and complete their credits so that they can get their diploma.
Yeah, um. So this is what this person is going to be doing?
Yes.
They're going to be working with them to try to bring them up?
Yes. We, we're going to take teachers that we have in our building that would have been teaching the seniors anyway, and they will be part of the, the center. And then this, this person is going to help train them in mastery learning where that they are trying to show competency on different standards so that the teachers can go ahead and give them credit for that. It's very similar, you know, they're going to take, for instance, a class. They're going to outline everything you need to know to be successful in this class. When the student shows mastery of that, the teacher will sign off on it. When the student has everything signed off for a course, then they will get a grade of P for passing for that course, and they can move on to the others. All of this will be problem-based learning. They will not be on the computer just, you know, being assigned to random courses. It will be an active way for students to learn the material, demonstrate the material, and get credit for the items. So this way, they can get more than you could get in a traditional school year.
Okay. Um, Charles, so is that how you pronounce his last name?
Yes.
Okay. Is he a consultant or a person that has experience doing this type of work?
He does. He does have experience doing this. He's run the innovation, an innovation center for at-risk students before, so he's not a consultant. He will be actually working hands-on with the students and the teachers, showing them how to do problem-based learning as well as helping them understand the data. He also will be helping them with, for instance, flex credit. If a student can pass a comprehensive final, you can give them credit for that course. So for instance, many of our students can pass a comprehensive final in health. You know, they know a lot of that material, but you have to do it in a certain way so that they can earn credit. So he has experience running a center, and he has had great success with students, even students that don't speak English. So I, I have full confidence that he'll be able to do that for us, and we are paying for him out of a grant. So this is not a position that is coming out of our general fund, and we have grant funds to pay for that.
Okay.
Any other questions or discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Um, did we get a motion in a second?
Uh, possibly not. We might have jumped right into discussion. So I need a motion to accept the consent agenda as written.
So moved.
Second.
By Mr. Glenn, seconded by Ms. Bryant. And now can we have a vote, please?
Yeah, no, I got a question.
Okay.
So I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Oh, um, on the, um, this last one down here, field trips?
Yes.
Oh, yeah. Uh, are we transporting them there?
It was my understanding that the transportation would be paid from fundraising that the basketball team would do. I was told that this is something they go to each year, so. Right?
I don't, I don't remember them ever going to you, but that don't, they weren't. That doesn't mean they haven't. I just don't ever remember field trips around Christmas.
Okay. And I will say that if things don't change, and if, you know, the COVID numbers are increasing, there's a high likelihood that this would be canceled. This is something, when I ask about, I was told that they go every year. So they may have just told me that. They do? Okay. Okay.
Well, maybe it's something we haven't necessarily approved. That's possible.
It, that could be.
I just don't remember no field trips for the basketball team at Christmas time, okay? I'm older than the rest of y'all, and I can't get, but I just don't remember seeing anything like this on, on the agenda for us to approve. I mean, I don't have anything against it. I just don't remember it. And when I, what I was talking about was, were we transporting them?
We, we are not.
Huh?
We, we personally, our, our buses are not. It's my understanding that they will rent a bus or charter a bus with basketball funds.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion on the consent agenda? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
And that was my last item. Thank you.
Thank you. Item ten, addendum to the agenda. We don't have one. Eleven special orders. Never have those. Uh, twelve, open discussion by the Board of Education. Does anyone have anything they particularly want to discuss this evening?
Uh, the question that was posed during public input, do we discuss that now or, um, tomorrow?
Um, the, do we want to discuss, I'll, I'll leave that to the board members. Do we want to discuss it now? I wouldn't want to do it tomorrow. I think we would, we would wait till the next regular board meeting. Um, I don't know if everyone wants to give it some thought before we have a discussion about it, or just go ahead. What are your thoughts?
What is it? That we're doing?
Reverend Bryce asked, asked the board to consider naming the Early Learning Center after Dr. Cosby.
No.
Uh, I don't. Dr. Cosby had recommended that we named it after Ms. Ellis.
Yes, she did.
Mm-hmm.
So. And my recommendation was that Mr. Wolf's name would also be on it. Dog, because I, I mean.
Who doesn't have a nice, uh, Carol and Wolf Early Learning Center?
Not Carol and Wolf, but Allison Wolf. Wolf and Ellis, whatever. But, um, um.
I think that would be appropriate.
Yeah.
And, and it's something that doesn't need to be decided right this second. We, we have plenty of time before we have signs made or anything. Uh, I, I understand where Reverend Bryce is coming from. This was a, a project that was very dear to Dr. Cosby.
It was. It was.
I know that she particularly, uh, was in favor of naming it for Mrs. Ellis because of the years and years and years and years that Mrs. Ellis has given to the district. So I'd say let's, um, let's put off coming up with an official name. Uh, we appreciate Reverend Bryce's suggestion. Um, but I, I think maybe sticking with, um, I, I like the idea of it being Mrs. Ellis and Mr. Wolf, who gave, uh, what, altogether sixty-some years? If, if we combine the two?
More like seventy.
No, more than seventy.
Okay. So I, I think that would be, that would be appropriate. So let's, um, let's keep that on, on, in the back of our mind, and we'll, we'll revisit an official name uh, in the coming months. We, we have, if it's going to open in August, which is our hope, we don't have too long to wait to come up with the name. So, uh, maybe we will discuss that, you know, um, the next board meeting or, or a, an upcoming one soon.
Sounds good. Sounds good to me.
Any other discussion items? Okay, uh, the date of our next Board of Education meeting, our next regular meeting, is Monday, November sixteenth at six a, six AM, six PM. And, uh, tomorrow evening, October twentieth, we're having a special meeting. Uh, that is for, uh, it, when we hired the Ohio School Boards Association to help us find a new superintendent, part of the package that we paid for includes a superintendent board workshop so that we can, uh, become a really smoothly-running, uh, team. And so that's what that will be tomorrow evening. It will also be on Zoom. It will also be streamed and recorded, I believe. And, um, it is an open meeting, but nobody will actually be, uh, together. So, uh, that is tomorrow evening, also at six. And do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Next.
Seconds all over the place. Moved by Mr. Kilgore, seconded by Ms. Ellis. All in favor? Aye. I, I think we got a bunch of ayes there.
Yeah, I said aye.
Okay. Thanks, everyone, and I'll see you, uh, same, same time, same place tomorrow evening.
All right. All right. Have a good evening.
You too. Good night. Good night, everyone.